All right, welcome everyone to this evening's meeting. We're going to have the invocation by Chaplain LaVores Holloway from Clayton County Police Department. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let us bow heads and hearts. O wise and merciful God, we come to you as a people. We come to you as a collection and aggregation of people who reside in this great county. We seek your will tonight. We seek your heart. We seek your calls and your call for each and every one of us. We bring before you this Board of Commissioners, this Chairman, and all these representatives of the respective districts. We bring before you every resident, every business, every servant within this county. And we say to you tonight, oh God, let your kingdom come. Let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We ask right now, God, that you allow for an amicable and a peaceable discussion. But we also pray that you will rule with mercy and justice. In Jesus's name we pray. Let everyone say amen. Let's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 2nd, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, does any member want to offer any amendments?
I do. Madam Clerk and Mr. Chair, Mr. Hancock is, I think he's getting that resolution to come down that I... Yes, the email that I emailed to you to add that resolution to the agenda to call for a hearing to, for the Housing Authority members.
Can you state what the emergency is to add this item?
The emergency is, is that Mr. Starr has 30 days to respond to the Housing Authority Board members. That 30 days expires on August 6th. And it is very important that this Board of Commissioners address those actions by the Housing Authority members to determine if they acted improperly.
When will we be addressing the Housing Authority members?
I'm sorry?
When will we, when will we, as a board, be addressing that?
At the next meeting. This, this resolution would just actually call for the hearing to notify them that we're having a hearing to...
But if he has to know, if he has until August 6th, wouldn't that be before the next board meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'm calling the question.
Hold on a second. I think we just need clarification on the emergency item.
Mr. Chairman, can we add, what up? Protocol?
Okay, where's the resolution? I haven't even seen the resolution.
Right here, it's sitting on the desk.
And I emailed it to you over the weekend, Mr. Chair.
I got it, it's sitting right here.
I think that's a different, is that the different one?
I don't have it.
No, this is, that's for Flash O's part.
No, the other one. One five five?
One fifty-five.
Yeah? It's right there.
Yes, it's here, I'm sorry, it's here. And, and it was also emailed to you.
I don't have one.
Okay, what I can't, what I don't understand, Mr. Hancock, is how can we determine if this is of an emergency nature if we have to add it without asking the question?
Mr. Chairman, the, the, the question's been called...
I'm asking the question.
You're out of order, Mr. Chairman. There's a question that's been called.
Mr. Hancock, answer my question.
There's a motion to call a question. That's not debatable.
Okay, I'm clear on that.
To vote on that motion. It, it's just not a debatable motion under Robert Trow's order.
To add an item?
No, sir, to call the question. To call the question is, it stops debate and, and it has to be voted on. The motion to call the question has to be voted on. If it passes, then you go back to the original motion and it has to be voted on. But the, the, the issue of whether to call the question is not debatable.
Still not answering my question, but question's been called. I'm clear. There's a motion. Is there a second? Now, you made the motion.
No, she made the motion.
I made the motion.
Okay, is there, you second?
Yes, I did.
All right, probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
It's three two, it passes.
No, that's to call the question.
Oh, it's on the question. Okay, now to add the amendment.
So, so move, Mr. Chair, second?
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay, it's three two. That passes as well.
Are there any further amendments to the agenda? Hearing, aye, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I've moved that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendment.
Second?
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay, it's three two. It passes.
Approval of the July 19, 2016 Regular Business Meeting minutes?
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there's a second. Is there a second?
No, second?
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Absent.
One extension, it's four oh, it passes.
As well as the July 19, 2016 Public Hearing on the Proposed FY 2017 Military Rate Increase Minutes?
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there's a second.
I'll second it.
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? One extension and four, uh, four, it passes.
May I get a resolution, please, that they just voted for to be added to the agenda? I don't have a copy.
Mr. Chairman, member of, members of the Board. The Board will now hear public comments. We do have citizens that have signed up to speak before the Board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, Unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. It is now time for your evaluations and they begin now. The first area for evaluation is the lack to date of the passing of the Clayton County Signed Ordinance Revision Legislation that further addresses the problem of illegal signage, signs and disrepair, flag banner signage, and all other manners of unlawful signage in unincorporated Clayton County and will give more enforcement power to the Code Enforcement Department to fight, sign, fight, fine, penalize, and issue more stronger citations to correct these widespread rampant and out of control code violations throughout unincorporated Clayton County. For failure to show leadership in this area, for failure to pass the Clayton County Signed Ordinance Revision Legislation, and for violating number seventeen, Article Two, Section Two dash ten that lists your powers and duties as Clayton County Board of Commissioners, which states that you have the power to prescribe penalties and punishment for violations of zoning ordinances and codes and all other lawful ordinances adopted by the Board pursuant to this and the other law enforced in said Clayton County. I am forced to conclude that this area is a non-priority with all five of you and you will not get it done, period. So your evaluations in this area is now a failure. And all five of you are operating at the failure level in this area. And more importantly, as a commission body and team, you now have your first major violation and your first negative mark, stain, blemish, demerit, major deficiency, and a mark of shame in your commission dossier and record for your shameful inactions in this area. Now, the only positive in your evaluation of failure in this area is that it's a fluid evaluation and it is not permanent. And that as long as you remain Chairman and Commissioners respectively, and you decide to have a change of heart in the right direction and caring about Clayton County, its look, appearance, and how this county is viewed by others, and take the right, correct, and proper action in passing the Clayton County Signed Ordinance Revision Legislation, execute the ordinance, and I see direct action results and success in this area. Then and only then will I remove your evaluation of failure and adjust your evaluation upward into the passing level. However, I do not envision making this revision at all because all five of you have clearly shown me by your continual inaction, lack of interest, non-care and shameful attitude to date that this is a non-priority and you just don't seem to care about this, period, in my opinion, of course. And whereas I once had the trust, confidence, and assurance that all of you would get the job done in this area, I now know better and no longer have the trust, confidence, and assurance in all five of you to get the job done in this area. So your evaluations of failure in this area stand. Evaluations will continue at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting.
Anthony Williams.
Mr. Chair, Anthony Williams, Clayton County resident. You know, when I moved to Clayton County, one of the reasons it brought me here was because of the growth and because of the love that Clayton County demonstrated. At this time, right now, I'm very appalled at leadership. Leadership, especially for various districts. You guys have demonstrated just tonight, and I had an opportunity to not be able to be a part of the voting system because of a decision that I made. But since I've served my term and I have completed that, I'm back in the issues of voting and being very, very active. Tonight demonstrated that somewhere there has been a flaw, the way you communicated with each other over that adoption, shameful. Citizens of Clayton County was not going to tolerate this. And I say that because of one reason. Citizens are going to begin to stand up and let you know who your bosses are. Because we elected you. You didn't hire us. We hired you. So what you need to understand is that the eyes of the citizen are going to be on you from now on. Me, I take it upon myself personally that I'm going to begin to, as Dr. just said, evaluate you individually. And I'm going to bring it to the attention of my constituents, that we need to stand up and make sure that we replace any one of you that has the inequality and the inability to lead this county. This is what we're going to stand. And I need you to watch us very carefully because as the concerned citizens of Clayton County, we are going to begin to let you see us visibly standing up for our rights, for our leadership, and what we demand of you and what we respectfully ask you to do is to lead us, to govern us, to be good stewards. But if you have, if you don't have the ability to do so, you know what's easy for us to do? Is to get rid of you and put someone in your seat who can do the job. So now you caused us, you poked the bear long enough, so now you got our attention. So now I ask you to pay attention.
Kathy Loving.
Somebody left their glasses. My name is Kathy Loving. I'm in Riverdale, Georgia.
That's some gentleman just left.
Who's are they? Okay, okay, I'll bring them back to them. I will take them back to them. My concern is the martyr bus stops. That's what I'm here to talk about. I live at eighty-three eleven Taylor Road, on Taylor Road. There's an acceleration lane and it, which is also a de-acceleration lane. And I don't know who did the study or did not do the study or where they put those bus stops. When I come up out of my driveway, I have to get into that lane to feed into the traffic if I'm going towards one thirty-eight. I also have to get into that lane to feed into traffic to go towards Flint River. Well, the bus stop is placed right in the middle of my neighbor's yard, five yards to my right or to my left of my property. There's going to be a head-on collision. The speed limit is supposed to be thirty-five miles an hour. And Marty had a representative come out today and I thank him for that. And I thank my Commissioner, my former Commissioner, Ms. January, Ms. Rooks, and I, I thank the city of Riverdale because they came out from code enforcement and they saw the hypocrisy or the fallacy in where those signs are placed. They're in a dangerous situation. Somebody's going to be killed. None of you probably have ever been hit by a car. Me, twice. I have to stand in that lane to get my mail out the mailbox and jump out of that lane when the idiots come flying around because they can't get into the acceleration, de-acceleration lane. What do you think's going to happen when the bus is coming this way and I got to go this way and the idiots are trying to swing around them? It's an accident going someplace to happen. I'm telling you right now. And even though Jonesboro, which is also Clayton County, they put it on the corner between two lakes. It's not even on really a corner, in the grass where you can go by there any day and see copperheads or water moccasins. And the people have got to get off the bus in there with no place to walk. There's not even a D-LX, a D-acceleration lane or an acceleration lane in that particular area. They need to move those signs and move them with post haste because it is a danger. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, by the way, I'm looking for you to come and bait my mosquitoes.
I got you covered, ma'am. Don't think I don't. Mr. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Jonesboro, Clayton County. I want to talk about allocation and distribution of funds. Political decisions are not based on what is best for the community. It's based on quid pro quo. I will vote for yours if you vote for mine. If Wade Starr didn't know he needed approval from the Board to do consulting work, then that is incompetence. If he knew and did it anyway, that's lost me. So how do you explain giving Wade Starr $36,000 for a no-show job with no parameters? He passed with a three-two vote by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. What was the justification? Quid pro quo. $470,000 proposal for a concession building. Commissioner Hambrick, that is poor use of county funds. District Two does deserve to get a new concession building, but not for a half a billion dollars. For that money, you can get thirteen new police officers, for police chief, Chief Register, who is understaffed. Commissioner Edmondson has a sharp eye. He spoke up about $50,000 for TV monitors, but then got $36,000 for a no-show job. And he did not say a word about $470,000 for a concession building. How do you explain that? Quid pro quo. There's a $10 million lawsuit against the Centennial Contractors Incorporated by the Baltimore Housing Authority. Did you consult with your new consultant, Wade Starr, who is also the head of the Housing Authority in Clayton County? For over two years, I have sent letters, had several meetings about the unsanitary conditions at the Steve Lundquist Aquatic Center, but I can't get the funds allocated. Safety, sanitation, and security should always be a top priority. There is mold, mildew, bacteria, fungus in the shower stalls, unsanitary floors, and rusted lockers. Paint chips falling from the ceiling into the pool. The interim director of Parks and Recreation Solution, well, we'll put a Band-Aid on what needs surgery. Transparency, integrity, and honesty is kryptonite for politicians. There's a great quote from the movie Hunt for Red October. "I am a politician," which means by nature, "I am a liar and a thief. If I'm not kissing babies, I'm stealing their lollipops." But it also means I keep my options open. Quid pro quo. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
How you doing, Chairman, Commissioners? Boy, I tell you, the night is very special, but I, I wanted to take the time. We have a shining star in Chief Register. Chief Register was on one oh four point one with Monica Kaufman and Judge Hatchett. And he did a wonderful job in representing Clayton County. So I just wanted to acknowledge him and thank him for his service. As we move forward on Agenda Resolution one fifty-five currently by Commissioner Gregory introducing this resolution, it has now become a sunshine violation. The reason it has become a sunshine violation, Mr. Wade Starr himself sent the email to all of you all and Mr. Hancock a month ago. There was plenty of time to vet that, that resolution. So with the sunshine law violation, that means there was ample time to put it on the agenda to notify the citizens. So the emergency resolution is out of order. Totally. Secondly, Mr. Wade Starr did not go before the Board of the Housing Authority to get approval to, prior to bringing this resolution to the Board. So he's out of order. So there's a lot of missteps that has taken place because there was no vetting done, there was no due diligence done by the county attorney and by Commissioner Edmondson that introduced this emergency agenda on June the 7th. So at the end of the day, we are embarrassed. The newspaper is blowing us all up because of the incompetency and nobody paid attention, but Mr. Wade Starr seemed to be controlling the vote. Not only is he controlling the vote of the BOC, he's controlling the vote and attempted to control the vote of the Clayton County Housing Authority. You know what I'm saying? By getting rid of the three people who voted against them. Somewhere in common sense, something is out of order. I did my due diligence on the Lincoln Economic Development Foundation when they was trying to buy the three properties from Jamco. I read it, Raymond Jane's statement, the financials. It was a win-win for the county. Over the thirty-four year period, possibly could have been a $26 million profit for the county. The Development Authority approved this and vetted this deal. But Mr. Wade Starr, because he had the three votes on the Board, had you all to vote it down so he can get back to the Clayton County Housing Authority. Now, that is malfeasance in order. That's malfeasance, period.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ray... Violation. Ray James.
Good evening and thank you. Hello, everybody.
Ma'am, you have to address the Board, please.
I'm almost speechless, which is a rare thing. But, but let me, let me just say that my Commissioner is Shayna Rooks and will be Shayna Rooks through the end of the year, which is a very tearful thing for me. My experience is, is that she has consistently looked out for what we wanted, what we needed, and if there was a reason that we couldn't get it, she'd let us know that. My experiences with Jeff Turner has been that if I called, he responded. I have had situations whereby I have called and said, "We're interested in doing thus and so in our community." And even though it was election time, Chairman Turner turned up in our community, dapper though he was, but no cameras, no entourage, but just there to sit down and listen to what it was that we wanted and we needed and to give us guidance. So I can't speak to what the audience has going on with their grievances. But what I can say is the experiences for me and for North Bridges Estates has been Shayna Rooks, Jeff Turner, looking out for our best interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Benoit.
Good evening. Jeffrey Benoit, Clayton County. I'm embarrassed. I am greatly embarrassed at the Board here, sitting right here in this building. I'm embarrassed. I've often said, "If you're not at the table, you're on the menu." I sat in that Housing Authority Board meeting and read the contract. Even a fifth grader would have read that you have an exclusive contract that needed provisions before you stepped outside the provision of your signature to go into consulting. And in that, you chose to go into consulting, a consulting, a consulting business that's not even relevant in Clayton County. Mr. Edmondson, you brought that particular job to Wade Starr right after the loss of his run for this Board of Commissioner's seat, which I believe that after eighteen months, he may even get back what he put into his campaign. You think? You see, he did, the Chairman said, "Why don't we give him twelve months so we can see what his experience is and what his job performance is?" No, let's just give him eighteen months. Well, eighteen months times $3,000? What would that come up to be? What did he put into his commitment, his, his, his campaign? That's neither here nor there. Let's go to the Board of, to the Housing Board. While I'm sitting there at the Housing Board, while they are now censoring him for a contract that he signed, while he came and got into a contract with the Board of Commissioners, that in itself, what? Is a violation of his contract where the attorney should have held him accountable and they should have all done away with him. Why? Because you see, you got someone who doesn't respect the job he's in, those who put him in the job, and those who work with him. Now, he comes here tonight and he pushes an emergency agenda. There's no fire. There's no earthquake. There is no police killings. There's no emergency. There's no special need for this agenda. It could have gone by virtue of being vetted and those who got to do their voting do their due diligence to make sure that it is not a personal agenda, but a professional one. No, that's not what this is. Now, if in fact you're going to hear that agenda and vote on moving three, let me give you a suggestion. Remove all five of them. Move all five of them. Why? Because they did what they were put there to do. They caught him in an act of signing a contract that he should not have signed. They voted him out in a suspension permanently, but a week later they came back and voted him back in. Now, when they voted him back in, he comes to you and say, "Oh, I want to get rid of those who voted me out." Who is he? What does he run? And who's paying him? Oh, I know, I am. I know, I'm paying it. To this Board of Commissioners, yes, I am greatly insulted at the integrity of this Board.
Your time is up, sir.
As is our guest knowing our garbage in Clayton County.
Benoit, your time's up. Thank you. Mr. Robert Johnson, please.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. My name is Robert Johnson. I'm a former candidate for District Two Clayton County Commissioner. On the last meeting, I asked a question of those who voted for Mr. Wade Starr, three to two in favor of an economic advisor. I have an email and a little notation I sent out to all those people who supported me during the May election. I'm wondering if I could get an answer this week. I reviewed the film, didn't I get an answer? Can you possibly answer that? Why do we need that? You, sir? Mr. Edmondson? Why did you hire, or why, why did you feel the need for an economic advisor? Or why did you feel the need for an economic advisor, Mr. Wade Starr? You have an answer, sir? You, Ms. Hambrick? No answer? Oh. You, Mr. Gregory. You weren't here last week on the last Board meeting. Perhaps you have an answer? Silence? Oh, silence. Thank you. We didn't want to do this in front of the visitors. But if you choose the answer, you can contact me by my website, rjohnson1988. And you might want to send that to me if you could so I can reply to those people who voted for Robert Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. We do have a proclamation whereby Clayton County congratulates the U-12 Red Sox baseball team on their accomplishment of becoming the GRPA State Baseball Champions. If the Board members could please step down to prepare for the presentation. We'll do something a little different. We'll call each Board, each team member, one by one up. Then we'll call on family and coaches to come forward. The North Clayton Elite Red Sox Team. Jason Avila. Leo Blackburn. Caden Bryant. William Carter Jr. Marques Dunn. Miles Jackson. De'Anthony Marks. Tyler Payton. Avon Rucker. Hezekiah Scott. And Juan Smith Jr. Now, we may have the coaches. Rendell Jackson. Antonio Marks. Keith Bryant. Dre Blanton. And Deonte Blanton. And these are our champions. Now, if we can have family, friends. If we can have family, friends, please come forward at this time. We will have photographs.
Let it spread out on the floor just a little bit. Lower it down, guys, just a little bit. Lower it down. There you go.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes Flat Shores Parks, North Clayton Elite Red Sox, 2016 GRPA 12U Champions. Whereas, the North Clayton Elite Red Sox baseball team completed their 2016 season with an outstanding record and remarkable effort. And whereas, the North Clayton Elite Red Sox team is led by coaches Rendell Jackson, Antonio Marks, Keith Bryant, Dre Blanton, and Deonte Blanton B. And whereas, the North Clayton Elite Red Sox team is made up of Jason Avila, Leo Blackburn, Caden Bryant, William Carter Jr., Marques Dunn, Miles Jackson, De'Anthony Marks, Tyler Payton, Avon Rucker, Ezekiel Scott, and Juan Smith Jr. And whereas, the North Clayton Elite Red Sox team has shown incredible teamwork and commitment as they have achieved the following titles. 2016 GRPA 12U Tournament Champions with a 4-0 record. Clayton County Parks and Recreation 12U Champions undefeated with a 20-0 record. U-SAA Travel Ball Tournament Champions. U-SAA Super NIT Runner-Up. Four-time U-SAA Tournament Runner-Up. And 33-team home runs for the season. And whereas, the North Clayton Elite Red Sox not only excel on the ball field, but all players met or exceeded standards on the Georgia Milestones Assessment. 100% of the team carries a B average or higher and 50% of the team carries an A average. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners is proud to recognize Flat Shores Parks, North Clayton Elite Red Sox for their completion of a successful 2016 season and GRPA 12U Championship title. Now, therefore I, Gailby Hambrick, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate Flat Shores Parks, North Clayton Elite Red Sox on their outstanding achievement and successful season. I encourage all citizens to join me in wishing these athletes great success as they continue to excel in the sport of baseball. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of August in the year 2016. Gailby Hambrick, Commissioner.
While you all were cheering, you didn't hear that 50% of the team has A average.
And while they're taking their seat, let's give the parents a round of applause.
While they are leaving, I just want to say, not only has Flat Shores Park succeeded in the state championship, we had three other teams, I believe, Coach, to go to that tournament that did well. But this is the team that scored number one. Also, I would like to thank everybody that came out on Sunday for the back-to-school bash, which really was a bash. We had double, double attendance and all. So thank you all very much.
The Board will now hear a presentation on the MARTA update as presented by Mr. Keith Parker, MARTA's general manager and CEO.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Commission. It's been a while since we've been here. So we wanted to give you an update regarding your public transportation system and answer any questions that you may have. So just starting, an overview of what we'll be talking about includes a state of our fiscal, our fiscal state at MARTA, some highlights of our 2016 legislative session, the adopted budgets, both operating and capital for fiscal year 2017, a state of service update to give you a feel of how things are going, and then end on some future initiatives. So I always like to start talking about funding and where we stand with money. So as many of you know, MARTA was in a very tough fiscal situation. Prior to 2012, the Board had the accounting firm, KPMG, go out and do a study of MARTA finances. And they found that the agency was losing between $25 and $33 million per year and would be fiscally insolvent to the point where the agency would have a zero balance in its rainy day fund by the year, by fiscal '17, fiscal '18. That's that red line that was projected there. Instead, we've been able to turn those deficits into surpluses and added quite a bit of funds to our reserves that's reflected in that green line. In more stark terms, you look at fiscal year '11, the agency lost $35 million. In the last two fiscal years, we've added $35 million and we're projected to add $40 million this year. So instead of having a fiscal balance on our rainy day fund of less than zero, we will close out this fiscal year with about a quarter of a billion dollars in budget reserves. We took that good news to the folks on Wall Street and met with them. And for the second year in a row, we had a credit rating upgrade. We then refinanced some of our debt and that translated into a $48 million savings to the taxpayers over the next 18 years. As we look upon our legislative session, Clayton County was the first expansion of MARTA since their agency was formed 40 years ago. And we took some of that momentum and went to the state legislature to see if there was more of an appetite for additional MARTA expansion. We're pleased to say that the city of Atlanta will now have a vote this November to expand the MARTA sales tax by a half penny. And if those, and if it passes, we'll be building an additional $2.6 billion worth of infrastructure, new bus services, rail services and that sort of thing in the city. For the 2017 adopted budget, we have a operating budget of a little more than $500 million and a capital budget of about $400 million for fiscal year '17. A couple of the highlights. For the fifth year in a row, we will not be raising fares. In fact, we will be looking to partner with a number of our corporate partner opportunities to reduce the cost of our monthly passes. You'll be hearing more about that in the next few months. And we'll be able to continue our best-in-many-year rail frequencies of about every five and a half, six and a half minutes, a train comes during the rush hour. And we also will continue to improve on the bus service in a number of ways. On the capital side, the big thing for us is what we call state of good repair, where you read around the country. You've heard headlines, seen headlines and read many stories about transit systems that have fallen into a state of disrepair. They've had major accidents, had to shut down services. And it's because they have not made the necessary investments to keep the system running and good, running and keeping it in good shape. We are spending over $200 million this year. We'll continue to spend between $200 to $400 million every year for the next decade to keep the system up and running. And a lot of these projects are not sexy or things that you have big groundbreakings on. But it's what's necessary to keep the system safe. Everything from good fire protection systems, ton of ventilation systems, making sure all the power systems that fuel our system are operating properly. So on the state of service, I wanted to give you a couple of updates or highlights on it. One of the areas that we continually place major focus on is the safety of the system, the safety and security. This is a chart that compares MARTA with the other 10 largest transit authorities in the nation. And you see, we are second from the top in terms of fewest Part I crimes, those that are the most serious of crimes. And it range everything from assaults all the way up to homicides and that sort of thing. But you'll see, our agency is second from the top in terms of fewest of those crimes. In fact, if you compare us to places like Houston and Dallas where we carry almost twice as many people, we still have fewer crimes committed on our transit system. And we take that very seriously. And to continue that and continue the confidence we have with the public, we will be introducing body cams for all of our police officers. We have a pilot project that's underway now. At beginning January 1, we intend to have all of our folks outfitted with police body cams. We have issued in the last two and a half years or so more than 8,000 suspensions from the transit service for people violating the various rules on the system. And those suspensions range anywhere from two weeks all the way to permanent, depending on the types of crimes they commit. And we have yet to have a single civil rights complaint in regards to how we handle the folks. And our officer's approach has been, even when the citizens are acting undignified, they handle them with dignity so as to not exacerbate or escalate exchanges with unruly customers. We will continue to add more things to give our officers and all of our folks the tools they need to properly keep the system safe. This is an image of the 12 different angles. We can see what goes on in a MARTA train. We have just completed full installation so that every train now has camera systems on them. All the buses already have that. And so our goal is to make it so that having CCTV expansion in on the buses, on the trains and throughout our system, that MARTA will be the dumbest place for a criminal to commit a crime in our entire region. And we're going to start an ad campaign to remind people of that very shortly. Excuse me. This is a image of when our agency kicked off Clayton County service a little more than a year ago. And that is the picture at the bottom there is one of our former Assistant General Managers, who's now the CEO of the system in Orlando. But the lady there, she was our very first customer on the Clayton service. And so far, the results have been quite good. The ridership has exceeded our expectations. And we do statistically and scientifically valid surveys of our customers. And we find that about 80% of our customer base here in Clayton County are satisfied or very satisfied with the transit service. And that follows closely with the overall acceptance rate of MARTA throughout its transit services. We promised that we would open up a police precinct in Clayton. And this is a picture, of course, almost all of you were there when we opened up the service. In fact, we have two of our Board members there as well, Miss Roberto Abdul Salam, who I think was coming tonight, and of course Jerry Griffin, who is here. So we kicked that off and continue to have our police force operate out of that facility. It's been a success thus far. We also are continually trying to introduce new and different things into the county and to our overall service mix. Some of you may have seen that bus there. That's our first time having a double-decker bus. And we had it operating in Clayton for about a month. And we will rotate it around to different parts throughout our service area. Our airport service continues to be the best in the nation. On the rail side, you can go from downtown Atlanta to the airport in about 16 minutes for $2.50. In addition, we have recently entered into a partnership with the airport to make the airport station one of the very best in the country. So we're going to be significantly rehabbing that station and making it, again, one of the very best transit stations around the nation. And as a part of our overall effort to dramatically improve the bus service, we are introducing a number of new options into our bus fleet, including the 60-foot buses. You can see up top there, these vehicles hold upwards of 50% more people than a traditional bus. And they are, but despite that, because of the weight distribution on the axles, they cause no more damage to the roadways than a traditional 40-foot bus. In addition, we'll be adding the smaller vehicles as well, some even shorter than 30-foot, so they can get in and out of neighborhoods a lot easier. And to combine that with our remaining, our regular 40-foot buses. We went from having one of the oldest bus fleets in the country just a few years ago to replacing all of our older buses with newer ones over the last two years. And over the next two years, we will replace the other half of those older vehicles. So you will have all buses five years old or less in the entire bus fleet within the next two years. So we'll go from having one of the oldest bus fleets to one of the newest in the entire country. So some of the big future initiatives we have underway, most of them are technology-driven, including the ability to pay with your cell phone to use the transit system. So we are going to have one of the most sophisticated mobile phone apps in the entire, in all of public transit, in fact, in the entire world. So that you can literally go on your cell phone, download an app, and from your cell phone, be able to purchase everything from a monthly pass to a single ticket. And so you'll be able to spend two And so, you'll be able to spend $2.50 to get on a, on a bus or do your entire, or do a monthly pass. And then with the cellphone, never having to stand in line at a ticket vending machine or in a store, anything like that, you'll be able to use it to access the buses. That's how you would pay your fare, you would just swipe it, oh, you'll just wave it over the fare reader, or at the gates, be able to use it as well to get in and out of the transit service. When you run low on fares, the, the system will send you a warning to tell you if you would like to renew automatically, it would do that for you as well. So, it will, again, dramatically reduce the wait times for our customers. One of the concerns we have heard here in Clayton was folks having the ability to buy a ticket before their very first trip. This takes care of that because they'll be able to buy that ticket without ever even having to leave their home. Wi-Fi and cellular service on the buses, we have a pilot project that's already underway so that you can connect to our Wi-Fi service. We intend to have every bus completely outfitted with Wi-Fi within the next year, and, and this is not a concern on the buses, but on the trains, we intend, we're starting up a pilot project so that you also have Wi-Fi and cellular connectivity while on the MARTA trains, making us, again, one of the pioneer systems in the nation for doing this. A new MARTA website that'll allow you to get more information, access, how to travel on MARTA and get all sorts of useful facts. We are going, undergoing a major rehab of our website to make it, again, one of the best. Bathrooms, this is always a big deal for us, particularly as, as it relates to the rail stations. We have started with a pilot project of what we call smarter restrooms. As many of you know, because of the recession from a number of years ago, the agency reduced the overall number of restrooms, eliminated about two-thirds of them, and because restrooms are very costly to maintain and so forth, these restrooms are virtually vandal-proof, and they are interactive, so that when you come up to the restroom, instead of the traditional way of one of our station agents opening the door for you, the restroom talks to you and allows you to, it will open the door for you, you have a certain amount of time to use it, and if you take longer than that, the restroom will ask you, is everything okay? And, and if you need more time, you can ask for more time, but the restroom will actually call a police officer or an ambulance for you if you're having trouble. It, it automatically maintains, it monitors the amount of paper usage and that sort of thing, so it automatically orders this, and as I mentioned, because it is almost vandal-proof, it is much easier to maintain and to operate than a traditional restroom. We have one of these already up, two more under construction, and if the pilot project continues to do well, we will be expanding even more so in the next few years. We're also replacing every train in the system, so we are go, we, our, our current trains, some of them are the original trains that we started the system with in 19, in 1979, and, and many of them are in new, in need of being replaced. So, over the next five to 10 years, all the trains in the system will be replaced, so you have new trains, new buses, and much new equipment throughout our system. And we're going to make a major commitment to make the system look better and make the system more advertising, make, make, make the system more attractive. And a big part of that, it was be, will be a big commitment to public art. We will be dedicating 1% of our capital budget to adding public art throughout our transit system. This is a piece that was done by a New York artist in combination with other artists here locally, and that's at our MLK Station. We introduced this just a few weeks ago to much acclaim. We also were planning to look at how other agencies around the nation have handled this. This is an image of the transit system in Charlotte, one of my previous stops, where we used the bus shelters themselves to honor local heroes. This is etched glass, these are some of the first minority police officers of the Charlotte Police Department, and that is actually etchings into the glass itself, and they have a number of other local heroes who are identified, and then with the bus shelters themselves, they are used to recognize those heroes. And one of the things we found was that the, the stops that had this type of commitment to public art were vandalized less than our traditional stops. So, this is one of the things we will be introducing here in the county as well. And this is an image of some public art that's along the rail station in, in Charlotte as well, and these are shelters that not only provide help from the sign-in from the rain, but also, as you can see, are visually quite pleasing. And so, that art program, we will start in our commission with the agency, and you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. Last thing I'll mention is our next briefing in a few months, we want to give you an update on the high-capacity transit option. That's where we hope to bring rail service to the citizens of Clayton County. So, we will be finishing up the first study on that over the next month or so, so we'll be able to bring to you the highlights of the, of that effort. And with that, Mr. Chairman and others, I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from Mr. Parker by the board?
I do. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, doing well, thank you.
The maintenance building that we were supposed to get, when is that coming?
Yes, ma'am, we are looking still for properties, and the goal was to have that done within the first five years of service of Clayton, and we're still on pace to make that happen.
Okay, and the double, the double-decker bus, tongue twister, are we using, were we using those here in Clayton because of the high ridership?
One of the things we want, like to do is to just test equipment in various areas, so everybody has a chance to see it, feel it, and then give us feedback. So, once we rotated through a number of places, our research and analysis people, I'm sure, will go out and then survey customers and ask what they think about it, and to see if that is a, a piece of equipment that we would then want to add to our fleet mix. But yes, Clayton was the first place. I think we had it here for about three weeks to a month.
Saw it last week.
Yes.
And Ms. Loving is back there, Kathy Loving, regarding, did you hear a question earlier?
I did.
How do we determine where the actual stop is placed? I, I do remember having discussions about it not being on Taylor Row when we were voting on it. So, when do we get an opportunity to have another review panel for citizens to come to see when the future stops could be placed, and if they have any objection, they'd be able to make those at that time?
Well, she raised a safety concern, so that is ongoing. So, we, we won't wait until the next, what we call markup, where we change bus stops and routes and that sort of thing. So, I, I think she mentioned that we had a person out today who, who, who helped take a look at that.
Right.
But if, if we deem the stop as an unsafe place, and then there is a, a good alternative, we will try to move on that as quickly as possible.
She contacted my office, so she didn't say everything. What, what issue was, when we were discussing it, wasn't going to be down Taylor Road. So, my question is, when will we have an opportunity to have the, the, the citizens be able to see when the next stops are going to be placed?
So, I'm saying, because that is, she's raised a safety concern, we can start that immediately.
I have, right.
Yes.
So, when are we having a meeting?
General, general meeting.
Yeah, let's call and talk about that specific one, but about future.
Just anybody.
Yes, but, but about future bus stops and route locations. We do those about every six months, so we have public hearings and so on, but we take feedback at all times and then use that feedback to then develop a plan of action, and that normally would consist of route changes, shelter placements, and all those things, and then we take that out to public hearings, hear additional feedback, take that to our Board of Directors, and then finalize that over a number of months.
Do we have anything planned before December 31st?
Any, yes, so now would be the time to start making those adjustments, so we could potentially have.
So, we have a meeting.
Change within December.
I'm sorry, so we do have a meeting planned before December?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Any other questions?
Do you know the date? Okay, so it'll be mid-September.
If you could, and I'm sure you will, send us a specific, exact date.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
I don't have any questions. Keith, thank you.
All right, are we done?
We appreciate the work, appreciate the presentation. Y'all keep on, keep up the good work, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
The board will now consider request of Phyllis Stewart, Purchasing Administrator.
Good evening.
Purchasing has two items that they would like to present.
Please take them together.
The first item is recommendation for award for the RFP 1645 Deferred Prosecution Program Gun Safety Course for Clayton County, Georgia Annual Contract for the Solicitor General's Office. The recommendations for award is to the most responsive and responsible proponent meeting the specification with the highest score, Operations 21 LLC, located in Cumming, Georgia. Funding is available through the Pre-Trial Intervention Program. The second item is the request for contract amendment for the support and maintenance of the Clayton County Public Safety 700 MHZ Project 25 Radio Communication Systems Information Technology. This request is being made on behalf of the Information Technology Department pursuant to Section 2-136, 7 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, General Purchasing Methods. The request is to amend the current sole source award to Motorola Solutions, Inc., located in Schaumburg, Illinois, to reduce the support and maintenance of the Clayton County Public Safety 7 megahertz Project 25 Radio Communication Systems from 438,374 to 301,000, four, uh, 637 for, for one year. Funding is available through the Information Technology FYE 2017 Budget. This request is for you to approve the request, authorize the chairman of, or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
Stand up.
Is there a second?
A second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Hearing none? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. The board will now consider request of Ramona Bivins, Chief Financial Officer.
While Ms. Bivins is coming to the podium, I'd just like to take this opportunity to congratulate her and her staff once again for receiving an award for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that they submitted last year, so they will be receiving a certificate of achievement, so let's give them a round of applause. You're doing a great job, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have two items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment 2-01 for Parks and Recreation to amend the budget in the amount of $63,604 to roll over donations received prior to fiscal year 2016 year-end, and to recognize donations from Stevens Construction, which were received during fiscal year 2016. Budget Amendment 2-2 is for the Federal Narcotics Condemnation Fund to amend in funds to purchase two vehicles for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $21,044.
All right, is there a motion?
Stand up.
All right, it's been a motion, all second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Interim Chief Staff Attorney, Jack Hancock.
Mr. Hancock, before you start, please take them all except 155 unless one of the board members would like another one singled out, but I'd like to also take this opportunity to recognize Judge Garrett, he's in audience for the first, first time I've seen him, I believe. Judge Garrett, appreciate you being here, sir.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, Resolution 2016-145 is a resolution to allow State Senator Valencia C. to host a town hall meeting and dinner at the Frank Bailey Senior Center to authorize the chairman to perform, to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes. Resolution 2016-146 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with Central of Georgia Railroad Company to facilitate the Battle Creek Road widening project, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. 2016-147 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a forfeited vehicle from a Clayton County Police Department drug investigation, to authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county, to provide for the dispersal of sale proceeds, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution 2016-148 is a resolution to authorize Clayton County to accept a vehicle seized for forfeiture by the Clayton County Police Department Drug Task Force, to authorize the vehicle for county usage and assign the vehicle to the Clayton County Police Drug Task Force, to authorize central services, fleet maintenance, and the chief financial officer to take all actions necessary to achieve the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution 2016-149 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with the City of College Park, Georgia, providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County will conduct the City of College Park's elections, to authorize the chairman to execute any document and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes. Resolution 2016-150 is a resolution to amend the Clayton County Fiscal Year 2013 and Fiscal Year 2014 annual action plans to allow for the recapture and reallocation of funding to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the Fiscal Year 2013 Flatshores Park Concession Project, which is supported by the Community Development Block Grant, to authorize the chairman to execute any necessary documents and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses, all as may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. If I could point out to you in the third whereas in that resolution, the number 5507 in the third line is incorrect, the correct number is 559, 5907, the total of 53,15266 is accurate, just a mistype there. Resolution 2016-151 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County on behalf of the Clayton County Juvenile Court to enter into an affiliation agreement and contract for services with Georgia Court Appointed Special Advocates, Inc., to accept grant funds and to set forth the terms and conditions under which the grant funds will be utilized for fiscal year 2017, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and contract for services and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution, excuse me, Ordnance Number 2016-152 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Part 2, Chapter 94, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking, Stopping and Standing, Section 9457, prohibited parking of vehicles during certain hours, so as to modify the times which it is prohibited to park vehicles on certain roadways, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Resolution 2016-153 is a resolution to provide for the establishment of the net mill rates after credit for values added by reassessment for Clayton County's fiscal year 2016, 2017, to authorize the levian collection of property taxes at su, as, at such rate required by the state of Georgia, to cover expenditures associated with the maintenance and operation of the county and activities necessary and incidental thereto, to cover expenditures associated with the provision of fire services, to authorize the mill rate credit equal to taxes collected from the 1% local option sales tax, to authorize the chairman to execute the certification of official rates, together with any other document pertaining to such mill rates, to provide for an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And Resolution 2016-154 is a resolution to acknowledge receipt of the permanent and final net mill rate after credit for values added by reassessment for 2016, 2017, adopted by the Clayton County School District, to provide for the proposed levian collection of property taxes at such certified rate for the support and maintenance of public schools, public education, and activities necessary and incidental thereto, to provide for an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Properly moved and second, are there any questions on any of the items?
I do. For Resolution 216-150, it might be a finance question. Is the recapturing of funds, how does that exactly work?
Commissioner, how that works is that we appropriate funds for hot grants. Um, Commissioner, how that works is that, uh, we appropriate funds for HUD grants, which the DOC approves. So at the end of each cycle, we go back and recapture funds to be able to clean out those accounts and make up for any gaps that we might have had during the year.
Okay, so what determines what a cycle? What, what's a cycle?
Uh, the, um, the funding year, each funding year, yeah.
So why do we, why are we recapturing from two thousand thirteen? It's recaptured after each cycle?
Uh, some, um, some of those projects have, um, uh, have completed actually and have some residual funds in them. So what we do is clean up the accounts to do, uh, newer projects. Those funds, uh, um, that are attached to, uh, um, activities have been completed.
So when were they completed?
At different times, I don't know exactly what dates.
But before two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Are there any other areas where we can recapture funds to use for something else?
Um, yeah. I'm not sure if there is any, I'm not sure if there's any, but if you can, from the agenda, all the funds that are being recaptured have to do with park, parks projects, parks projects, because you have to stay within the same activities.
That's fine, I mean, we have pro- park projects that I like to do, I'm just, I'm wondering if there's any other monies out there to be recaptured and why are we recapturing funds in two thousand sixteen from two thousand thirteen?
Uh, we have to review the, um, other, uh, um, the various proj- um, budgets and see if there's any.
What precipitated you reviewing for this particular resolution to determine whether or not there was funds to recapture?
Well, this project started, um, years ago, and in twenty-twelve, when I came to the county, there was some monies in this project that was not moving. As you know, if we do not, um, spend a certain amount of money a year, we run, uh, file of HUD, uh, these regulations. So I went and spoke to the commission, to the district commissioner, to take that money out of that account, so that we can spend it, with the promise that we're going to come back and replace the money, and also with understanding that if you move monies from years, whatever the cost of construction is, that we will be able to support it. So there is a table we can give you to see all the, um, allocations that were done for the parks. So every year, all the departments that do public projects apply, uh, parks and rec usually apply for all the parks, we've done so many other parks, so they apply and we evaluate what it is they're asking us. This reallocation request is for fifty-three thousand plus.
Right, but specifically, if you, per your assessment, if HUD, if we don't spend the money, HUD takes it back, is that what you're saying?
Uh, no, they don't take it back, but what we do is that we like to clean up our accounts.
Okay, so you have fifteen thousand four forty-six fifty-nine for, from two thousand thirteen for after-school programs, did we not use the money for the program? What, do we have too much in the program? I'm just trying to see where the mon- why we, why do we have this money sitting in this pot?
They, they didn't use it, we in the, in the HUD division of my department, we don't do direct service, we give, we award money. So the department becomes the sub-recipient of the fund, they get reimbursements based on invoices they are submitting. So at the end of, at the end of the program year or the activity, whatever invoice they do not submit becomes the reduc- um, the residual funds. So we don't spend the money ourselves, we grant money to different departments, agencies, and they submit invoice, it's all, it's a reimbursement type of process, where you spend the money, send us the invoice, and we re- um, reimburse you, and we go and monitor what they are doing. So at the end of the activity, whatever monies that are not spent stays with the program.
How are we as commissioners to know if money is still out there? Like it's two thousand sixteen, this is three years ago, that you're saying that monies have just been sitting out there?
Yeah, but the monies that are sitting out there, these are all county projects.
I'm not talking about what the project is, I mean, just in general, as a commissioner, let me just say for myself.
Okay.
How am I to have known that this money was available that was not spent on this particular project?
Uh, you would not know ordinarily until you ask for a project, but before we can do anything with the money, we come through this forum to approve an action plan.
But how would I know to ask if I don't know it exists?
Um, some other commissioners have asked in their, in their districts for projects, do you have stuff to do parks, this, that, and we go and start looking to see if there's any.
So is there a possible way for you guys to just let us know without asking? Cause I don't know.
Well, well, we can make it a routine, where we tell you on a quarterly basis what might be there or not be there, because, uh, some of those monies also can be if an activity is underperforming, which means there is a rule with HUD that you must spend more than one point five of your allocation on any given, um, a funding year. So when we see an activity that is not spending, we usually approach them, they sign the agreement that we have the wherewithal to withdraw the monies from them. So sometimes we go do that, but I will instruct staff to prepare a report that will come to the board on a quarterly basis.
So when did you know that the after-school program wasn't performing?
No, I said, in some cases, not that they didn't perform, in this case, they performed, they did the, um, the activities, and those funds, uh, we had, are, are the residuals for, uh, from those activities.
So can I, can I assume that it ended in two thousand fourteen, it was just sitting there as unused funds?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So in an effort to help clarify.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you please just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Sule Carpenter, I am the, um, program manager for the Community Development Block Grant in the HUD Program Division. Um, our pro- we have program years in which the funding is awarded, however, our projects are not bracketed within the specific funding year. We have many projects that take place and ex- and extend beyond their, their actual funding year. So, um, I can't say that the project ended effectively in two thousand fourteen, we still had grant activity on, associated with that project up until we received a request to reallocate the, uh, the funding, the remaining balance.
Okay, how would you have no, how would one know that there's a remaining balance?
We wouldn't know until we ask, is what you're telling us, since she, to her point.
We certainly track the balances internally, inside of our division, and we have a report that details the remaining balances for each activity that we funded.
Well, I wouldn't know to ask if I didn't know the project existed or, I feel left out, I feel like there's a conversation in the head and I don't know anything about it.
Let me say this, let me say this, is there a pot of money left in the fourteen and fifteen? Is there extra money there?
Not a pot of money.
No money in an account, because to Mr. Gooden's point, if we got money like that, then we need to be doing some other things with it, but we gotta know that pot or that money in that account exists.
Uh, Chairman, there is a caveat with this money, most people think that HUD money, you can just go get it. You have a project, it has to be vetted, it has to feed into a certain census tract before we can touch it. So that the money is there doesn't mean that any project.
And I understand that, but if we don't know.
Okay.
We can't even ask to get it evaluated.
We will in two weeks tell you, tell you, look through the accounts and see, but what we have done traditionally is, during our application season, when departments apply for projects, we look at what has happened in those program years and pull monies to satisfy what the departments are asking us for, or the cities. We go there and pull those money. All those monies must qualify as public good, uh, linked to low to moderate income citizens.
You're gonna have to tell me what that means, too. You gotta quantify that.
Well, HUD has a table that, um, um, that determines what they classify, and we don't classify that, they give us a table of what fits into low to moderate, I think it's eighty percent, eh, 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 yeah, eighty percent below AMI, so median, uh, um, average median income. So they give us the table, and we use the census tracts to determine where our citizens are that meet that requirement. They also give us some, um, a census tract, so the way we do it right now, uh, is to make sure if a project does not fit into that census tract, we don't even review it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you recall when you got into office, we ran into a problem with HUD, where we did a project outside of a tract, and it caused some problems and we were able to resolve it. So we have strict guidelines as to the projects we do, but I will gladly bring something back in two weeks to submit to the board, to let you know what activities have closed. But what I will say in full disclosure is, if an activity is still current, we will not be touching those projects.
Of course.
Yeah, but we will look at closed activities and tell you what's there.
That's all we ask.
Yeah.
Huh? That's all we ask.
Okay, all right, sir.
And then, so we're not getting our hopes up, tell me if my areas don't qualify.
We can send your office the census tracts tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Send it to all the commissioners.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye? Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Hancock.
Yes, ma'am.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you have some language in the, this resolution that's coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it's been legally vetted, the last sentence being guilty of misconduct.
Where, where are you?
First page.
First page, last sentence.
Before, it's going to be approved, I know, but I don't want it to, I don't want this board to, first page.
Do you wanna make a motion in a second before we discuss the item?
Let her finish her question, Mr. Anderson.
We have, we have to, we have to.
Mr. Edmison, you're out of order.
I, I defer to the parliamentarian.
Let her finish her question, thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Rooks.
I- i- if your quest.
It's the first page.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to point you where it was.
Yeah, I understand, i- i- it is, it is my understanding that that is an accurate statement of what happened at the Housing Authority.
Guilty?
Of misconduct, they voted on it?
That is my understanding.
But they took a vote.
If that's not, but for this board, if that's not accurate, what kind of legal liability we have if, if it's not accurate, if we approve this?
I, I don't think you have any, because all you're approving, if you approve this, is the calling for a hearing in order to determine the facts surrounding the incident.
No, it, it's, it, it says whereas at their, so we are asserting that what they told us happened, happened. Is there any way for us to confirm that that occurred?
We are, this resolution asserts that those, that that is one of the allegations that is being made.
Right, but that's a significant allegation, if we're talking about us as fiduciaries and whether or not we could be sued for putting that language.
You can't be sued for language in a resolution.
We're.
You just can't, I'm sorry, you're, you're immune from that. Uh, but, but I understand your question, uh, I mean, there is no liability for, for language in a resolution being inaccurate, or the word, the wording being inaccurate. Specifically, what happened at that would be subject to evidentiary proof before you add a hearing if you choose to call a hearing.
Do you know, do you see the line I'm referring to?
Yes, ma'am, I know, I, I know exactly what you're referring to.
So aren't we just adopting what we were told happened?
No, no, ma'am, well, yet you are saying, this resolution says that that is one of the bases, is that allegation is one of the bases upon which you are choosing to call a hearing, to, to ascertain what the facts are.
That's not what it says.
It don't sound like it's allegation to me, it sounds like it's a fact that it was found guilty.
But the whereas, the whereas portion of a resolution merely lays out the basis for the ultimate action part of the resolution, which comes after, uh, the whereas provision, I mean, excuse me, the now therefore paragraph.
Right, but the whereas is generally a fact.
It's an allegation, it, it, I mean, it, it may be a fact.
It's a fact.
It, it may well be a fact. You are not by voting on this finding that that whereas paragraph, or that whereas provision is accurate.
Do we need the, this particular whereas in order for this resolution to be passed? All they're, they want is a hearing.
No, no, you don't, you don't need any of the factual allegations if you choose to call a hearing. I mean, the, the reason I think it was drafted in that manner would be to give as much notice as possible for the basis for the, the calling of the hearing, um.
But that would then be the evidentiary part, whether or not this gentleman was found guilty of misconduct, that's the evidentiary part, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Why do we need to find that in the, why, what, why does that have to be in the resolution?
The, the facts as alleged are, are in the resolution because they provide the basis for your calling of the hearing. It's been alleged that these things occur, and therefore you're gonna call a hearing to make, to determine whether or not those facts occurred, and if they did, whether or not they warrant any action if you choose to do that, um.
Well, the way, the way that our other resolutions are drafted, the whereas are factual statements. Every other resolution that we've ever done, the whereas follows facts that we deem are factual.
We, we hope that to be correct, that's correct.
So if that is our policy, why are we then submitting a, a clause that says whereas, and it's not something factual that this board has found?
Well, you couldn't call a hearing based upon actions, I mean.
I got it, I got it.
That this board has found.
So it says whereas at their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, the Housing Authority Board found this person to be guilty of misconduct. We, so if we follow all of our former procedure, everything that we say after whereas is something that this county board believes to be a fact.
No, ma'am, it is, it is something that the presenter of this reg, of this, uh, resolution believes to be a fact.
Well, when the board adopts it, I mean, I guess it's.
Not necessarily, not, not necessarily.
Does that, does that need to be in it in order for them to have their meet, their, um, hearing?
No, ma'am, it, it doesn't need to be, or it could be, i- i- it could be amended to say whereas it'll, it is alleged that this occurred, if that would make you more comfortable, and that, that would have no impact on it.
I think that's better, if it's alleged, instead of saying that it.
Well, it hadn't been a motion yet, so, you know, when we get a motion, somebody may be willing to amend it.
I just wanted to ask that question because.
Sure, I mean, yeah, that could happen, it's, it's kinda like in your, in, in your future job, uh, you, you'll try criminal cases in which there's an indictment in, that, that somebody thinks is true, but the ultimate finder of fact may find it not to be true. And that's what this is about, sir. Yeah, so.
All right, that was my question, that, that, I just needed to.
I understand.
All right, Mr. Hancock, proceed on.
Oh, a resolution authorizing Clayton County Board of Commissioners to conduct a hearing consistent with OCGA section eight three fifty-three, to determine whether any member or, members of the Housing Authority of Clayton County shall be removed from office to authorize the Chief Staff Attorney to send notices to the hearing, including the charges, location, date, and time of the hearing as required by statute, and to provide effect, an effective date of this resolution. And it's resolution two thousand sixteen one fifty-five, Madam Clerk, I don't think I read the number.
Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Checking.
Properly moved and second, are there any questions? Are there any questions? Again, let me say this, I question whether or not this is not, whether this is an emergency item or not. What I find is that it looks like we're trying to remove people from office who were trying to hold somebody accountable. Just as we're trying to hold them accountable, that Mr. Starr has asked us to remove them, they have asked to hold Mr. Starr accountable for the breach of contract. And somebody said early, quid pro quo, I don't know, but at the end of the day, it doesn't look right and it doesn't smell right.
Amen.
And I know it's gonna pass, but at the end of the day, within my prior, uh, privilege, I'm definitely planning to consult with the state's Attorney General to see if the Open Meetings Act was not violated, and if it was, I will ask him to act accordingly.
I have a procedural question, how does a hearing take place? Who holds, who, who calls for the evidence, who's the hearing officer, how does that happen? How does that happen? Where's the procedures and guidelines for that hearing?
This Board of Commissioners is the hearing board, and the Chairman, in his capacity as a Chairman, would serve as presiding officer.
Okay, so there's no written procedure as to how? We just ask questions, that people can bring their lawyers, and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Then we take a vote on it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
All right.
It would be, I think it would be handled pursuant to the Administrative Procedures Act, which lays out some groundwork for the way those types of administrative hearings are handled.
So this action will take place at the next board meeting.
At 6:00?
At 6:00 PM.
Yes, so that's what the resolution calls for.
And they will be given notice...
Yes, sir.
...to appear...
Yes, sir.
...state their case.
Yes, sir. 10 days, the statute requires that they receive 10 days' notice prior to the day of the hearing, so...
And today, until those days, till that hearing date...
Yes, sir.
...they are still members of that board.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Full operational rights.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Those in favor, aye. Oppose, nay. It's 3-2, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, we have an order of remission, request for refund resulting from a judgment on a forfeited bail bond pursuant to Georgia law, State of Georgia versus Winston Charles Nolte Jr., and Easy Bail Bonding LLC is the surety in the amount of $2,280.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
And we need an executive session on litigation and personnel matters.
Thank you.
Item number 21 is to accept a streetlight petition addition to existing streetlight district Sycamore Court in District 4. This is Commissioner Edmison's district.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Item 22 is an appointment to the Board of Appeals zoning to fill the expiring term of Francis Solomon. The term is three years, expiring on September 3, 2019. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Ms. Solomon.
I'll second it.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next two appointments are to the zoning advisory group. The first is to fill the expiring term of Frienda Norwood. The term is three years, expiring on August 19, 2019. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold this appointment.
I have a recommendation. Ms. Frienda Norwood says she did not want to be reappointed, and I would like to appoint Mr. Ricky Clark. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Nay.
3-2, it fails. Is there any other nominations for this position?
For the, not for that one, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. Madam Clerk, go to minutes.
The next appointment to the zoning advisory group is to fill the expiring term of Addie Whitaker. The term also is three years, expiring on August 19, 2019. This is a full board appointment. Any nominations?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint nearly 30-year homeowner, resident, Ms. Addie Whitaker, to the zoning advisory board, to reappoint. Second.
Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. If there is no further business, there was a request to go into executive session for litigation and personnel.
It's a motion going to executive session.
I move going to executive session.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Probably moved in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.